Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Thousand Oaks City Council Meeting for Tuesday, March 6, 2018. If please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rodriguez, good evening. Could you call the roll for tonight's meeting, please?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Present.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember McCoy.
Present.
And Mayor Fox.
Here. Item four is request for continuance of any agenda or public hearing item. Any items council would like continued. All right, hearing done. Before we go to special presentations, I want to acknowledge Boy Scout Troop 754, who's attending our council meeting tonight. Boys, if you'd stand up. Troop 754 is composed of approximately thirty young men, ranging in age from eleven to eighteen years of age. The troop members come from different schools across the Caneo Valley. They meet at Newbury Park and are sponsored by the Elks Lodge. And they are here as part of their merits badge work. And we welcome you guys to our city council meeting, and we wish you the best. Very good. Let's give them a round of applause. With that, give me a moment. We'll go down to the podium for two special presentations. For our first presentation this evening, I'd like to invite up to the podium Brett Offerman. Brett is the past president and awards chair of the Tri-County's Chapter of the California Water Environmental Association. Brett will be recognizing Hill Canyon Treatment Plant Maintenance Supervisor Enrique Perez as the Electrical Instrumentation Person of the Year. Brett, tell us about this award.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys having me here. I'd like to talk a little bit about the California Water Environment Federation, founded in 1927. It's a not-for-profit public benefit association of ten thousand plus water quality professionals. CWA members are responsible for cleaning California's water and returning it safely to the environment. CWA educates and certifies water quality professionals, disseminates technical information, and promotes sound policies that benefit society through protection and enhancement of our water environment. Our services are offered at the state level as well as locally through our seventeen geographical local sections, of which the Tri-County is one: Ventura, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo. CWA is a proud state member of the Association of the Water Environment Federation, which provides technical education and training for thousands of water quality professionals around the world. So with that, I'd like to talk about Enrique Perez. He's a maintenance supervisor at the Hill Canyon Wastewater Treatment Plant. He oversees five quality team members who are responsible for the electrical instrumentation and annual maintenance at the plant. This past year, Enrique not only ensured the quality maintenance of plant equipment, but extensively contributed to the implementation over one million dollars in automation improvements, including the SCADA system and other related upgrades that were approved by council through capital improvement projects. Enrique's extensive work throughout the implementation of these projects and his consistent efforts to apply his skills to improve the facility are being recognized by CWA tonight. His experience and knowledge are representative of the high caliber of professionals in our industry, and we're proud to present Enrique with the Electrical Instrumentation Person of the Year Award. Enrique?
Enrique, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're not going far.
I'm not going far.
Very good. Our second presentation is also an award from the Tri-County's Chapter of the California Water Environment Association. The city's Hill Canyon Treatment Plant received a Community Engagement Award for Outreach Project of the Year. I'd like to also invite Public Works Deputy Director John Smolus, Utility Superintendent John Minkel, Cable Operations Supervisor Carl Jurecki, and Video Production Specialist Richard Swigler to the podium. Brett, tell us about this award.
Very good. So this award is granted to agencies who extend the effort to engage the community in the critical services they provide. This year, Hill Canyon staff teamed with Thousand Oaks Television Staff, TOTV, to create an educational video of the facility. The very cool video, as I like to say, features a detailed explanation of the modern wastewater treatment process, which includes a drone flyover of the facility as well as other great video and audio features. The YouTube video, which is entitled "Hill Canyon Wastewater Treatment Plant Tour", has had over two thousand views to date and is expected to increase as word gets out. The positive results include a more informed public and serves as a resource to schools, residences, businesses, or others on how a wastewater treatment plan works and the successes of the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant. We would like to recognize the city of Thousand Oaks for its educational video of the Hill Canyon Wastewater Treatment Plant.
All right, that moves us to item six. That's our public comment section for tonight's council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you call public comments, please?
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may refer to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Eight individuals have presented cards. In pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker will be Karen Gorbak. Following Ms. Gorbak will be Adam Haverstock.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Fox, council members and staff. My name is Karen Gorbak. I'm the Chair of the Thousand Oaks Council on Aging. At our February 21 meeting, the commission asked me to address you this evening to express our desire that you support as many new projects as possible for assisted living and memory care developments, including those whose fees will accommodate individuals at a variety of price points. As you know, the older population in Thousand Oaks is growing more quickly than younger age groups. This was verified at the city council meeting last May, in which the results from the Community Opinion Survey were presented by True North Research. When the mayor asked the researcher why the survey included so many more respondents over the age of sixty-five than in prior years, he simply answered, "Because that's the direction in which your population is growing." This reality presents the city with both opportunities and challenges. Economic development, for example, speaks to the opportunity. A growing body of research illustrates how older adults make significant contributions to their communities. For instance, they contribute to the local economy, often by working far past the obsolete retirement age of sixty-five. In addition, they expand the capacity of business and social services through volunteerism, which is especially true in Thousand Oaks, with more than twelve hundred senior volunteers. With regard to entrepreneurship, a new report published by the Milken Institute just this past January, titled "Turning Silver Into Gold," notes the following: "Most entrepreneurs are over age fifty. People in their fifties and sixties launch new businesses at nearly twice the rate of people in their twenties, providing economic opportunity for themselves and others. But our challenges are also clear. Because we know that a number of older adults may eventually need physical and emotional assistance beyond what their families can provide. At the January 10 Council on Aging meeting, we heard from Dr. Bader Ichbaw from Most Railways Hospital about the specter of dementia and Alzheimer's disease that will strike far too many families in our community. Thus, we implore the city council to enhance the livability of Thousand Oaks by ensuring that our local government supports sufficient accommodations and services for those of us who are lucky enough to live to an old age, who may need assisted living or memory care, and who choose to remain among family and friends in this lovely community we call home. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Gorbak. Our second speaker is Adam Haverstock, followed by Amy Yukic. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Adam Haverstock. I am the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight to give you an update from your chamber. First, I wanted to say thank you to the members of the city council and also the city's leadership team that came out to the chamber's annual awards gala last Friday night. It was a wonderful event, I think, by any measure, and we were certainly happy to be honoring the city's Economic Development Manager, Hader Alawami, as our Man of the Year. So, one more time, I'd love to thank him for all his hard work, and we were happy to honor him. I wanted to tell you about a couple of events that are coming up at the Chamber of Commerce. The first is coming up on March 21. It's a Wednesday night. It's our Mixpo. It is the largest chamber mixer that we hold on an annual basis, and therefore, we added a Business Expo component. So Expo, Mixer, Mixpo. That's why we call it that. It's going to be at the Agoura Hills Recreation and Events Center from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. It's a Wednesday evening, and we are currently looking for businesses interested in registering for the Business Expo portion. There's no registration required for people to attend. Just come to the door. Next, I want to tell you about our collaboration with Caneo Valley Unified School District. That is our principal for a half-day program that we do on an annual basis. It's going to be on Tuesday, April 24, in the morning. It goes from nine to one. It's a great opportunity for both chamber members and members of our community to go to a school site in Caneo Valley Unified School District. They get to a job shadow of principal. They get a tour of the campus. They get to hear from local educators about challenges and opportunities in today's education system. And then there's also a luncheon that's going to have a keynote from the CVUSD Superintendent, Dr. Mark McLaughlin. So, it's a wonderful event. We are currently accepting registrations from people that want to participate. There is no charge, but we do need preregistration so we can assign you to a school site. So, anyone interested in doing that is welcome to do so. They can do so at our website, caneochamber.org. And then finally, I wanted to tell you about a couple other awards. The first one is the chamber's tenth consecutive President's Circle Award awarded to us by California Chamber of Commerce. It is an award they created ten years ago to honor chambers that are performing at a very high level, and we have received that award every single year that has been offered. So this is our tenth consecutive one. There are five chambers in California that have all ten years received the President's Circle Award. And then finally, another cool award that we were happy to receive. Every state Assembly District in the state of California, their Assembly Member selects a Woman of the Year. And this year, the Woman of the Year for Jackie Irwin, State Assembly District, was our President and CEO Jill Letterer. She was selected for this district, and so she is going to be recognized on Monday in Sacramento on the floor of the State Assembly, along with all the other Women of the Year from the seventy-nine other districts. And then Assembly Member Irwin is going to be having a reception at her district office next Thursday night. So if anyone would like to be there to be part of that recognition, we would welcome that. And unless there are any questions, that does conclude my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Next speaker is Amy Yukic, followed by Mark Chotaner.
Good evening. Hi, I'm back with some solutions, I hope. So, I'm from Los Robles, and I have just a few pictures that I took and my neighbors took in the last week of the homeless issue. We're a really kind-hearted community. I see a lot of my neighbors here. But we're being taken advantage of. And when the face of our homeless culture here is vagrants, what we get is apathetic, angry, and we withhold our generosity because we think our contributions don't count. Why would we donate to LSS and other charities to watch them feed people that are a threat to our safety and litter all throughout our community? I've driven through Calabasas, Agoura, Westlake. They don't have the issues of the vagrants that we do. Why? Because we offer services in the middle of our downtown. When did Thousand Oaks become the Caneo Valley homeless shelter? Why here? Who thought that was a good idea? The concept of the community conscience is a very nice one, but not in the midst of where our families and children shop. San Francisco Business Journal just published an article last week that said, "San Francisco has some streets that are dirtier than the world's filthiest slums, India and Kenya included." "A homeless encampment sparked the Bel Air blaze that destroyed homes," says the LA Times. This can be our headlines. It's very serious. Caltrans crew, equipped with Bobcats, commercial-sized dumpsters, and hazmat suits, were dispatched to dismantle the encampments on the side of the 101 just two days before the official homeless count. So those people that have been squatting here for months no longer are here for the moment. And so the fancy-sitter reports that are going to come out and publish how we're tackling the problem and everybody's doing a stellar job is really based on things that are rigged. And so why are we wasting everybody's time? I don't know who decided to do that before then. But after hearing Mr. McCoy's statements two weeks ago at the meeting I was at about trying to bring in the private sector to help with the homelessness, and I began thinking of ways to achieve that, I just realized that we're spreading ourselves way too thin as a small city. We're a generous community full of residents that have a lot of resources to contribute in addition to just cash and canned goods. I'm proposing a program for the people like Mrs. De La Peña talked about, like the real estate agent that was living out of her car, to be able to get a fresh start with real support, not stand in line for food and be lumped in the categories with vagrants. They deserve support in private and with dignity and with long-lasting results. And if we can provide these people with a peace of mind and that their basic needs are tended to, we have a better chance of getting these people focused and back in the workplace and maybe a life that's better than ever. In 1950, my grandparents and mom immigrated from the U.S., from Poland, having their entire family murdered by the reign of Hitler. The Jewish Federation matched my grandparents with sponsors and gave them interim housing and provided them with lists of employers that were willing to hire them even though they didn't speak English. They lived in Erie, Pennsylvania, population one hundred and sixty thousand, very similar to ours.
Ms. Yukic, you got to wrap up.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'll submit the statement.
All right. Thanks very much. Our next speaker is Mark Chotaner. Following Mr. Chotaner will be Denise Cortez. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Mark Chotner. Thank you for your time tonight. I live adjacent to the Los Padres Trailhead off of Los Padres Drive. I've become increasingly frustrated with the amount of panhandlers on the corners of our streets and transients who are accessing the Los Padres Trail across the street from our house. In the past couple of weeks, we've had two shopping carts abandoned around the perimeter of our house. One of them you could have seen in the photos that Amy showed. I know this issue of homelessness is an extremely difficult one to solve. I don't have the answer for what to do with all the homeless people in our city. However, I do have a couple of ideas that I'd like to see implemented by the council that I think could be beneficial, a beneficial start, to getting rid of some of the panhandlers and transients who have descended upon Thousand Oaks. A huge first step in addressing this problem is education. There is still a large percentage of our population that thinks that they are doing a good deed by giving some spare change to a panhandler begging on a street corner. All this does is make the problem worse for everyone. I know the city has created some movable signs that are randomly placed at entrances to various stores around town. I don't feel like this has made enough of an impact. We need to do more to educate our residents that giving money to panhandlers is not acceptable, and it benefits no one. Other cities have erected permanent signs on streetlight poles of intersections that are heavily trafficked by panhandlers. These signs discourage people in their cars from giving money to transients begging on street corners. On the bottom of the sign is wording that directs motorists where they can go if they would truly like to help people in need of aid. Another request I have for the council is to ask the police department to set up temporary cameras to monitor the traffic going in and out of the Los Padres Trailhead on Los Padres Drive. We have seen a substantial rise in the amount of transient traffic at that trailhead in the past year and a half. And then we saw another dramatic increase over the past couple of weeks since Caltrans broke up the homeless encampment off the 101 and Lynn Road. We spotted several of these transients smoking as they entered the trailhead. As you're all well aware, we are in a severe drought. It wouldn't take much to set that entire hillside ablaze. This is a disaster waiting to happen. My neighbors and I are fed up. We need to do something about it. I urge you to work with the police department to find a way to monitor the transient traffic at this trailhead through temporary cameras, and I urge you to erect permanent signs throughout the city discouraging citizens from giving money to panhandlers. I'd also like to add that Captain Aguilar and Senior Deputy Cordova have been incredibly responsive to our concerns, and I would like to acknowledge their efforts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chotner. Denise Cortez, followed by Christina Mueller. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Denise Cortez, and I am the Director for Lutheran Social Services in Ventura County. We serve those who are homeless and those in the Caneo Valley who are housed with children and the many elderly that are living in extreme poverty in our community. I'm hopeful tonight that I can help shed some light on the issue of homelessness in Thousand Oaks because information, good information, true information, is so important to this conversation. LSS has been providing meals three hundred and sixty-five days a year to those who are in need for more than twenty years. Currently, we feed between fifty-five and a hundred people every single night, and between thirty and fifty people stay at our temporary shelter every night during the winter months. The homeless population in Thousand Oaks is comprised of people of all ages. We see many elderly who are homeless. Their homelessness is due to a major event, such as loss of a job late in life, divorce, loss of their home, or very poor investments. Many of these elderly are now living in a car, and they come to our office to shower. The families with children that are homeless, we work every day in collaboration with Caneo Valley Unified School District to serve. The largest percentages of the homeless population that we see are young people, and these young people fall into two categories. There are many of them who grew up here in Thousand Oaks, most of them. Most of them grew up here. They actually went to Thousand Oaks High School, Newbury Park High School. They went to Agoura. They went to Oak Park and Westlake High School. Somewhere along the way, mental illness, or drugs, or alcohol took over their lives. These young people attended our schools. Some even played on our high school teams in their youth. But many of them ended up at our Caneo School, continuation at the time, and then they dropped out. The other category of young people that are homeless in our community are kids who were raised in foster care. We have an enormous number of homeless here in our community that were raised in foster care. These kids aged out of foster care at the age of eighteen at the time, before AB-12, or they walked out of abusive or neglectful situations, and many of them just wandered away, and not a single adult even noticed. They never had a parent take them to school or teach them how to read a great book or write a resume. They've never even learned how to drive a car. Many of them have been on their own for years. I was with a young man earlier today who ate his first meal out of a trash can on his twelfth birthday. He's been on his own every day since. He was born right here in the city of Thousand Oaks, and today he's twenty-two. It is the greatest hope of LSS that we as a community would pay closer attention to the many homeless children in our community, to the many children who are lost or left behind when they're young children, instead of waiting to notice them until they're old enough to make all of us uncomfortable. We at LSS work hard every day toward this end, every day. I want to add also that the other group of people we work with are the many parents of these kids who've gone astray over the years. Many of these parents come in on a daily basis to bring a coat or a lunch or something for us to give to their teenager who's now forty, who's sleeping out on the circle. These parents live in our community. Some of them are very neighbors.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Christina Mueller, followed by Elizabeth Hoskinson.
Good evening. Hello. Good evening. Thank you for having me. And my name is Christina Mueller. I'm a Thousand Oaks mom and also a family physician that is giving my first city council talk, so pardon me. So I provide medical care to the underserved and homeless patients in Ventura County and can put a name, a face, and a story to many homeless people. I think a community should be judged by how it treats its most vulnerable members. Removing funding or chastising organizations that help the homeless is the wrong approach. We should not treat them like stray cats, but instead help them to find a better life. I don't think... We shouldn't treat them as a nuisance, but more of a visual representation of how we as a society can improve. What message are we sending to our kids if we boycott organizations like LSS who try to help these people find homes, feed them, or give them a place to sleep? I asked the council to help support programs and committees that would help provide assistance to the homeless population instead of just shuffling them out and having them go somewhere else. Programs that could help low-income housing, anything that could help these people achieve a different place in life. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Elizabeth Hoskinson, followed by Michael Lynch. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak. My name is Elizabeth Hoskinson. I've lived in Thousand Oaks since 1963. I have been working with the homeless at my church through LSS for twenty years, and I can put a name and a face to almost everyone who walks through my door. And it hurts me deeply to hear these people who are human beings being talked about in such a disrespectful way. I just felt moved to come and speak because someone has to speak for them. They're kids. They're seniors. They're adults. One of the people who walked through our doors a couple of years ago was an Eagle Scout, and he fell into drugs. And I have to say, listening to his story and just trying to give him an ear, a listening ear, was something that he really needed. And I feel like it's up to us to make a stand, and it's up to us to make a place for them because they grew up here. The people that we're talking about grew up here. They've lived here their entire lives, and they're being asked to leave. I can't even... They're asking, being asked to leave now the streets. This is heartbreaking to me, and I just... This is heartbreaking to me, and I just, I can't, I can't. I'm sorry, this is something that I'm passionate about and I feel very strongly about, and I'm having trouble with my words, but I think you understand the gist of what I'm saying is that these are people, and we need to treat them as people. And that's, that's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there a Mark Groenfeld? Okay, we don't, I have your card, so you're going to be next.
Thanks for having me. Hey, I just wanted to make a few comments. You know, I grew up in Thousand Oaks. I've lived here since the 1970s. Other than a few years, when I went to college, I call this my home. I feel blessed to have grown up in this community. Growing up here, the lucky, all the luck that I've had with this community and all the great things this community has done for me, over the past 10 years, I've just decided that I needed to really give back, and I started to kind of really work with the homeless. And I don't know what it was, it was maybe through my church, or maybe just seeing people that I grew up with that are homeless, that it kind of sparked a fire in me that, hey, as a Christian, I need to make a difference, and it's not about a donation, it's not about, you know, oh, those poor homeless people, I should help them, it's about me donating my time. And I think the city is such a great city because there are so many of us that are like-minded. And I see people on the corner, and I get it, you don't want to throw a $5 bill at them, you want to ask them, hey, man, what's wrong? How can I help you? How can I, as an individual, make you a better person? You know, it's not about looking at someone across the street and saying, oh, they're a vagrant, we got to get rid of them, we need to call the cops. Maybe cross the street and go, hey, man, what's up? What's going on? Why are you hanging out here? Ask them questions. I see people every Monday night, I see them on Sundays. You know, to me, it's something that as a citizen of Thousand Oaks, I feel that is my responsibility, and I think it's all of our responsibility, because we're absolutely right, like Denise said, they were born here, they grew up here, they were my friends. I went to Westlake High School, I teach at Westlake High School. I've had students that are homeless, and I've had friends that are homeless. You know what? Someone's a drug addict, someone lost a job, these are not things that people do by choice most of the time. I've dealt with drug addicts. They're people that are very difficult to reach, and they relapse, and they end up in the shelter. I think as a city, we can make a difference. We can build a facility maybe down the road where we can help these people. And then when you see that vagrant across the street, you go, hey, you know what? Let me help you. Let me get you to a facility that LSS has helped running, or someone in the community has helped running, the city council's helping run. You know, there's lots of resources out there. We need people, people to help. I know it's hard. I know you see the drugs, you see the needles, you see the fights. Just last week at the shelter, I had to break up two guys that were going at it. I understand, but the mental health facilities don't do the job anymore. We as citizens can do it. I just want to quote, by quoting the Bible, I know it's a public space, and I'm sorry, "Blessed are the poor," Luke 6:20. Looking at his disciples, Jesus said, "Blessed who, you who are poor, for yours is the kingdom of God. Blessed are you who hunger now, for you will be satisfied; blessed are you who weep now, for you will laugh." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Mark Groenfeld, followed by Sheri Groenfeld.
Good evening. My name is Mark Groenfeld from the city of Thousand Oaks. I came here in 1985 as a junior to California Lutheran University, California Lutheran College at the time. And then I started dating my lovely wife, Sheri, and as I was walking back from Cal-Lutheran after I graduated, I saw a homeless car in the church parking lot at Holy Trinity Lutheran Church. I was like, I better tell the pastor, there's homeless people sleeping in the parking lot in their cars. And then, as I'm attending the church, I found out we have a homeless program. This homeless program has been going on for years. And not only years, this homeless program, not only supported by LSS, it's been supported by congregations of the Jewish community, the Christian community, the Muslim community, almost every type of religious community in the Conejo Valley has supported this program. If you were at the Thanksgiving interdenominational service at California Lutheran University the night before Thanksgiving, you would have seen all the same people. And you would have seen all the same people open up their wallets to help support LSS because they know how important it is. And by the way, Pastor Larry, who was pastor at the time, I'm glad I never told you. But I also echo what Mike Lynch has said, is you see the same faces, you see them, you don't encourage them to be there. You be there to be a friend, you be there, you're there to be a voice, you're there to be an advocate, you're there to help the little girl that's one and a half years old that has to have a, almost a helmet, a frame over her head so that her skull can form correctly. You're there to feed them, you're there to smile at them, you're there to give them a place of safe haven for that time or for that night, right? You're there to give them a safe, warm meal, but they always say thank you. They're always there saying thank you. So those are my comments. I support LSS, and I think the community should as well.
Thank you, sir. Sheri Groenfeld, followed by John Cummings.
Hello, Groenfeld. See, it looks different, but I've gotten used to the last name, yeah. But I'm Sheri Groenfeld, and I'm from the Green Ridge area of Thousand Oaks. I've been a member at Holy Trinity Lutheran Church over 25 years, and when I heard that this was going to be mentioned today during the public comments talking about the homeless issue, I sent a text message out, and we have 10 church members here. That's how close to our heart this issue is, and it's such an important ministry of Holy Trinity. We participate in the Lutheran Social Services Meal and Shelter Program. It's at our church every Monday night the whole year long. I know, Ms. Bill DePena, you participate at your church, I know lots of folks here have been involved. Our church has been advocating for a permanent shelter to be located in the Thousand Oaks Newbury Park area, and we've written letters, and I know it was featured in the Acorn, because we are looking at more permanent solutions for the problem, I think, which Ms. Yucich was talking about too in the previous, or the speaker after that. But one comment that I saw in the Acorn after the article about the permanent shelter was how having a permanent shelter would be bad for our children and grandchildren, and I've had the opposite effect. Both of my kids are in college right now, because I was involved with the program and my husband was involved, they came with us. I mean, my son was five years old, serving these folks, and he learned nothing but compassion. My daughter, it made her a little nervous, but it also enhanced her knowledge of the world and how important it is to be kind to people. And I don't think they would be the people that they are if they had not had those experiences. And I have folks calling me all the time that want to bring their kids to help in the program, Girl Scout groups, Boy Scout groups, 4-H clubs, because they want their kids to have experiences helping others. And that is something that I feel is a very important component of the city of Thousand Oaks. And the only other thing I would say about panhandling, I know it's a nuisance, and personally, I don't give folks money when I see them on the road. I give them a granola bar with a card for the Lutheran Social Services Meals Program, and I say, you can get a hot dinner here every night of the week and take this card. And I'm not giving them money, and if you were to give money, I would give the money to Lutheran Social Services. That money will go into services to help these folks, help them get case management and have someone listen to their problems and help, help them, instead of just maybe a dollar here or a dollar there. But I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. John Cummings, followed by Greg Korn.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak. My name is John Cummings, and I'm a co-founder of Indivisible Conejo. I'd like to thank everyone who's been here tonight speaking on behalf of LSS. I share your views. I'm very happy to hear that the council is creating a subcommittee on the issue of homelessness. I'm far less happy to see what has been said about the homeless recently on Nextdoor, in the media, and in this chamber. Before community members callously pose extreme and punitive solutions for Thousand Oaks' homelessness problem, it's important to consider the roots of homelessness. And that'll require looking to your left and looking to your right, and then when you get home, looking in the mirror. Our community, our state, our country, our society breed homelessness. As a society, we've allowed our middle class to be hollowed out over the last 35 years, leaving millions more Americans living paycheck to paycheck and being at risk of losing their jobs, their security, and their homes. As a nation, we failed to sufficiently identify and treat those who are dealing with mental illness and drug abuse and alcoholism. As a state, community by community, we failed to grow our housing stock, creating an extremely expensive market on the coast that doesn't accommodate our working class and poorer residents. Here in Thousand Oaks, we're part of that problem, and we have not kept up with state regulations mandating the provision of low-income housing. A recent study showed that our area's homelessness problem is likely to grow as our rents continue to rise. That study suggested that a mere 5% increase in rents in our area will result in 6,000 more people losing their homes. We're not going to solve our homelessness problem by punishing the homeless. We're not going to solve it by driving them to the next town and dropping them off. And we will not solve it by deciding to stop spending public money to provide services for them, whether or not previous attempts to do so have proven effective. The ultimate solution to homelessness will not be easy to achieve, but it is easy to say. The ultimate solution to homelessness is homes. As you figure out the Boulevard Development Plan, as you work to increase the housing stock in our city, fulfill your obligation to allocate low-income housing. There are tough choices that you'll have to make in terms of locations. Not every homeowner in every neighborhood will be satisfied with these choices, but it's essential that you approach those decisions with clear eyes and with humanity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Greg Korn, and our last speaker will be Catherine Woollett.
Good evening. Thank you, Council, for allowing me this opportunity to speak, and thank you to the public, people of Thousand Oaks. I've really been moved by some of the statements I've heard, in particular, those from the religious organizations providing services to the homeless, and clearly, it's an issue that deserves the deepest compassion of all people. I'm also, I appreciate the, I'm a recent Thousand Oaks resident, my wife was born and raised here, I'm a New Yorker, and I appreciate the idea of protecting those who are from Thousand Oaks who might have become homeless by some adverse circumstance. Because where I come from, you protect the people from your town. But to attract additional homeless, additional people coming from other places, other cities, who might benefit from the services provided by Thousand Oaks, I don't think that's a great idea. And here's why. People say, you know, why are there so many homeless people in California? It's not the weather. Just go to New York City. That'll pretty much prove that case. New York City has a huge homeless problem too. And what I believe is that where services are provided, that's where homeless people gravitate to. And from, you know, these services are provided because of the compassion and the altruism of the residents. However, at some level, these things get taken advantage of. And certainly, California being one of the most liberal-minded states in the country is a state where, for whatever reason, even in the 90s, Mayor Giuliani, there's a rumor that he may have paid for one-way bus fare for the homeless to go to California. I don't know if that's true, but the bottom line is that if you build it, they will come. I'm going to be measuring three homeless facilities in New York City next week. I'm an architect locally here, but also work in New York, and I understand the importance of building homeless shelters. However, those homeless facilities are for the people of New York who were born and raised there. There's actually rules about who can get residency in these places. You can't just move from, you know, a random city in the middle of the country to New York and get services at some of these shelters at least. I think that the same thing should be true here. If you were born and raised, you went to Thousand Oaks High School, you ran into some trouble, then maybe there should be that consideration, but we shouldn't be attracting people from all over the country to this sort of situation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our last speaker is Catherine Woollett.
Good evening. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to speak. I moved here 20 years ago when my daughter was getting ready to go to kindergarten. She went all through, K through 12, at CBUSD schools, and as she was nearing the end of her education, I noticed that several of her friends from school who had graduated before her were spending a lot of time at our house, and I wondered, why is this? And I found out that when they graduated from high school, they were no longer welcome in their homes, and they were essentially homeless. They had jobs, but the jobs were never full-time and never provided benefits. So they couldn't afford to find a place of their own and ended up essentially couch-surfing from one home to the next. I took in several of these kids and made sure that they had a place that they could shower, get ready for work, and come home and have a meal every day. I don't understand how our community has turned into the type of place where everyone is looking out for themselves rather than looking out for their community. I don't care if somebody moved here a year ago and got laid off, or had a medical emergency that forced them to mortgage their home and got evicted. I think everyone deserves to have a place where they can take a shower, prepare to go to work, help them look for work. We're not talking about everyone being out on the streets because they're drug addicts or because they are thieves. We're talking about people who want to do well, who want to succeed, but the situation has not allowed that to happen to them. So when you're looking at your plans for the Thousand Oaks community, please take into account housing for low-income people as well as the ability for people to have a place where they know they can go to acquire a job or to get ready to go to work every day. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have one written statement card from Sarah Casey, and she is in favor of support for the homeless. With that, let me turn it over to Mr. Powers for some follow-up comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, we heard a number of speakers this evening speaking on the issue of homelessness from varying sides of that issue. As several of the speakers mentioned, later on tonight's agenda is the actual formation of a council ad hoc committee that will be, begin having some discussions related to the issue of homelessness, especially in regards to how we better coordinate the city's activities along with our local nonprofit providers, the county services, and other faith-based entities that provide support for homeless, as well as the private sector. We did have one speaker that mentioned, or several actually, that mentioned panhandling, and I just wanted to remind everyone, and they talked about some of the programs that we have in place. Those are all part of our Make Your Spare Change Count initiative. Anyone that's interested in reading a little bit more about the different providers that are better choices to give money to should visit t-oaks.org/panhandling, t-oaks.org/panhandling. We have information up there on that. For... For anyone that has specific questions regarding law enforcement and issues, I'm going to ask our police chief, Tim Hagel, to just step into the lobby, if you don't mind, for a minute. And anyone that has questions, Chief Hagel will be happy to chat with you a little bit about specific instances. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Moved item seven. That's our consent calendar. Any items that council wants to call special? Mr. Adams.
If there's no items, I'll move the consent calendar.
All right. Mr. Adams moves a consent calendar. Discussion on that. Fair enough vote.
Mayor, if you could record your vote or verbally state your vote.
I'm going to vote yes. Vote, please.
The motion passes 5-0.
All right, that is approved. Moved item eight. That's our public hearing for tonight. Madam Clerk, could you call item 8A for public hearing, please?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A regarding proposed assisted living facility, Zone Change Z 2017-70148. Special use permit, SUP 2017-70142. Oak tree permit, OTP 2017-70144. Mitigated negative declaration, MND 2017-70168. Located at 95 Duesenberg Drive, and the applicant is Griffin Fine Living. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for the city council and official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Nine individuals have presented speaker cards, and pursuant to council standards, each speaker will have four minutes, and the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Who's going to handle the staff report tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be handling the staff report. This is, as stated, the permits for a new assisted living facility on Duesenberg Drive. The project would build an 89-bed assisted living facility, require five separate items to be approved or adopted. The project site is at the corner of Duesenberg Drive and Los Feliz Drive, as shown on the screen. The first aspect to the project is a need to amend the general plan land use map. Currently, the site is in an industrial land use designation, as is most of the western side of Duesenberg. The applicant proposes to change this specific site to institutional uses. In general, staff believes institutional uses will be more compatible with the adjacent single-family neighborhood. In conjunction with the land use map amendment, the project requires an amendment to the zoning map to change the zoning of the parcel from M1 Industrial Park to the PL zoning district, which is a quasi-public and institutional district that allows an assisted living facility. On the screen is the site plan for the project. The orientation of the plan is different than the aerials. North is now on the left side of the screen, whereas on the prior maps, north was at the top of the screen. So Duesenberg is along the top of the screen, and Los Feliz is along the left. Vehicle access to the underground parking garage for this facility is accessed off of Los Feliz Drive at this location. This is also the area where the service facilities of the project are located. The applicant worked to place that as far away from the residents across Duesenberg Drive as possible. This also shows there is drop-off and pickup and guest parking location off of Duesenberg, where you can drive in, park, and either visit, drop off, or pick up an individual. The slide on the screen shows a perspective of the project, once again, from Duesenberg Drive. The building has varied heights. Staff supports the architectural design and the detailing of the project, thinks it will fit in well with the surrounding area. The majority of what is facing Duesenberg is one and two-story. There are portions of the building that are three-story, but most of that is on the rear side of the property, and partially because there's a change in topography between the front and the rear. The site has 25 protected trees, most of them, 21 of them, are co-slime oaks. Eight are proposed to be removed as part of this project. A number will be encroached upon. A tree report was prepared and analyzed by the city's landscape consultant. Staff is recommending four large 60-inch box co-slime oak trees as a replacement to the eight oak trees that are being removed. Typically, greater number of oak trees are required as replacements, but of a smaller size. In this case, the recommendation is to go with four larger-sized trees that will start off with more of a canopy and a positive visual impact. It should also be noted that the rest of the site will be planted with about 35 additional trees. So the applicant is placing trees of various species and sizes throughout the property. One aspect of the project is that the applicant is proposing to change the design of the intersection of Duesenberg and Clearwater to have a mini roundabout. This proposal was based on the applicant's extended outreach with the adjacent neighborhood starting back in 2014. The roundabout improvement is not a requirement of any ordinance or guideline of the city. It is not a requirement to address any impact of the project. The applicant is proposing to install this based on information from the neighborhood about the long queuing, particularly during the school drop-off and pickup hours that happens on Clearwater at this intersection. It's difficult to make a left onto Duesenberg at that time, and the design of a mini roundabout is intended to make it easier for the traffic on Clearwater to make it onto Duesenberg. The Planning Commission reviewed this at a public hearing on February 5th. Several speakers from the neighborhood attended in support of the project and/or the roundabout. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of all aspects of the project. Also, the Traffic Commission reviewed the design of the roundabout as well on February 21st, and also recommended approval. And there were several speakers at that meeting as well, though not all in support. The recommendation of the Planning Commission, Traffic Commission, and staff is that the council adopt the negative declaration, approve the general plan amendment, introduce the zone change, and approve the special use permit and oak tree permit based on the findings and conditions in the attached resolutions and ordinance. And that concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions.
All right. Nice job in the presentation. Questions for staff? Ms. Billie Lopena?
Thank you.
I got the staff report up, so I apologize for that.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor Fox. Good evening. I have a question about the oak trees. Did the initial or original application for the removal of the trees include eight trees, or was it fewer?
It was actually seven trees initially.
Okay, seven trees. And what is the size of the trees, since it's a three-to-one transplant, what is it, planting per tree? What is the size normally that we require?
And that, it's typically
For the replacements?
24-inch box and 36-inch box as the replacements.
And these are 60 inches?
60, yes.
Okay. And is, there was talk of underground parking?
Yes.
Okay, there was talk of underground parking. Is it underground, or is it now basement, or is that one and the same?
It's effectively the same. On the screen, there's a driveway off of Los Feliz that goes down into a garage that is below the first floor of the assisted living facility.
But there was talk of doing it several levels, and is it, how many levels is it?
It's a single level under the first floor.
Okay. I see your oak tree consultant is here. If we could have just an explanation as to why it went from seven to eight.
The replacement for any oak tree that's removed on a project are two 24-inch box trees and one 36-inch box tree for each removal. And those are approximately two inches for the 24-inch box and about three inches for the 36-inch box, for the caliper size.
Three inches and a 60-inch? No, I'm sorry, what?
60 inches, approximately five inches, maybe six inches, if you're lucky.
Okay. So they are still kind of
It's comparable.
And why did it go from seven to eight trees to be removed? Oak trees, co-slime oaks? Do we know?
And I think we can comment on that. There was a, there is an oak tree that is located about where the mouse pointer is, if you look at your screen. The applicant proposed to try to keep it, but it was our opinion that with all of the cuts that would need to happen in order to get all of the improvements around that tree, that the likelihood of the tree surviving was not high, and the tree was not as high of a quality of a tree in structure as the ones that were preserved.
I should also point out that this was, this tree was in a location that was ideal to place a loading area for truck deliveries, and one that allowed for the trucks to turn around properly. So it was a trade-off.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going back to the oak trees, I know that it wasn't too long ago that the grand jury took a look at our oak tree policy, the replacement policy, and they made some comments about that. Do we have the latitude to go from where our ordinance says it's three-to-one? Do we have the latitude to accept a larger specimen, then?
The short answer is yes, through our oak tree guidelines. And there's a bit of a judgment call there, but again, in this case, instead of having a larger number of smaller trees, we felt that having four large 60-inch box trees, as Mr. Campbell has indicated, with about a five-inch trunk diameter, it would have a greater impact on the project, benefit the neighborhood more than a number of much smaller trees. But we do have the latitude through our oak tree guidelines, which is a city council adopted resolution.
It makes perfect sense to me that that should be allowed. I just didn't know if it were. I have a question that had to do with those speakers who spoke at the Planning Commission who may have been opposed to the roundabout. Do you recall what their concerns were?
At the Planning Commission meeting, the speakers were all in support. At the Traffic, at the Traffic Commission, it wasn't all, it wasn't
I misspoke. I'm at the Traffic Commission meeting. The mic gets turned on. Were, I'm sorry, there we go. Their main concerns were that it really wasn't necessary, that there was not really a problem, and any sort of change at that intersection would not be warranted, and that the traffic circle would be confusing. And again, as any of us who aren't accustomed to traffic circles, the first time through is a little bit confusing. At this particular location, mini roundabouts are actually used primarily to slow traffic down. They're really a traffic calming measure, and in this particular location, that's probably the maximum benefit that it will have. But you would agree that it will allow the residents of that neighboring development there to make their turns out onto Duesenberg much more freely and easily? What it will likely do is, as those traveling southbound on Duesenberg, will actually make them slow down a little bit. If you've ever been out there, it's a pretty quick road. So the hardest part about turning left and getting out there is traffic comes up pretty quickly. So this will allow a little bit more orderly left-turn movements, because people will slow down and be looking. It will take some getting used to, but we think it will be effective. Thank you.
All right, any more questions for staff? All right, hearing done. Let me go to the applicant, Richard Neese. He's the applicant. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Richard Neese. Mayor Fox and members of the Thousand Oaks Council, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Richard Neese. I represent Griffin Fine Living. I'm a resident here in Thousand Oaks at 2049 Brookfield Drive. And tonight, we're here proposing an 89-bed assisted living and memory care facility, we believe, a much-needed and undersupplied service for our senior residents here in Thousand Oaks. I want to thank staff, Mark Towne and Peter Gilli, and especially Jeff Spector for the years we worked on this project, and their effort and help in getting us this far. And I have a group of consultants with me tonight. I was going to have them come up and just introduce themselves. We've worked over three and a half years, I think, on this project, so I might have them do that. We have a lot of information here, if you need it. We had a full presentation, but we're going to cut it real short, and we'll just wait and see if there's questions. So other than my introduction, I have a few more words after the introduction, and then we'll see what questions you might have for us. So where's my consultants?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dustin Wimmer. I'm a principal with Diamond West, where the planning and engineering firm worked on the grading plan, also the roundabout design. Had an opportunity to really be involved in this one from ground up, do a lot of the public outreach, so it's been a great time working with both planning staff, but also public works, to provide a roundabout, the first mini roundabout that would be in the city. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Bob Bombadere. I'm with L. Newman Design Group, resident of Thousand Oaks for 45 years. And I think we've covered the Verizon map in Thousand Oaks for the projects we've done. I'm taking over the firm as principal five years ago from Lee Newman, as he retired. And we've continued the quality projects in Thousand Oaks, and we've been working on this project. And we also have the arborist here that is a member of our firm. And we're here for support and any questions on the landscape architecture. Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Oblinger. I'm with L. Newman Design Group. I live in Thousand Oaks. I'm a certified arborist. I've been with Lee Newman Design Group for 30 years, and I've been an arborist for 15 years and have worked on many projects in the city of Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marika Johnson, and I represent Solvere Senior Living. We are the senior housing operator, working with Griffin Fine Living to operate the assisted living and memory care community. We're an organization that currently provides operational support and services to over 13 communities in six different states. We also provide consulting services, operational design and development to about another 30 projects across the country. So we're just here to participate and partner with Griffin Fine Living and bring a quality service to the city of Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you, consultants. And also with me tonight is Sean Ellis, a project manager who worked very closely with me on the project and staff. And our partners, Mark and Debbie Reese, are longtime residents and business owners, and they're our partners on the project. And with them tonight is also Barbara Reese, who's our first resident reservation, waiting to come to our facility. So thank you for being here. So very briefly, we began our project inquest and inquiry with the city back in 2014. I visited with Mayor Fox back then, and the city manager, and they said, you know, you're going to really have to reach out to the community, you're going to have to work with them. They have a lot of They have a lot of ideas, a lot of concerns on what happens in their community, and you're going to have to reach out to them and work closely with them. So we did that. And over three and a half years, we've had five meetings with their Westlake Hills Property Owners Association and a number of other meetings with their board. And we listened to their concerns. We believe through the process, we've met most of their concerns about the development of that project with noise, visual, and many of the other design aspects of the project. Overwhelmingly, though, we heard about the traffic, their concerns on Duesenberg Drive and Clearwater. And we worked to try to find a solution and signalized intersection wouldn't work and four-way traffic stop signs wouldn't work. So we ended up trying to see if a roundabout, a mini roundabout, might be a solution. Therefore, we came through staff and worked with staff with some ideas, and we ended up using the Federal Highway Authority Design Recommendations and came up with this mini roundabout, showed how that could be a traffic calming solution, and also get rid of the congestion and maybe make it a much safer intersection. So through planning commission and the Traffic and Transportation Commission, the idea for that was supported. And it was also supported by many of the residents there that had to deal with that traffic. We presented about 50, 50 support cards, I think, to you tonight. So they're there, then supportive of the project and also of the mini roundabout. So at this point, we want to just mention, we also reached out to North Ranch Village Town Home Association. We worked with the council on aging, with some of the demographics and analysis for coming up with the need for senior care and senior assisted housing in the city of Thousand Oaks. And we ask for your support tonight. And if there's any other questions, we have flash drive and lots of other detail we can get into.
Okay. Questions for the applicant from council? Doesn't appear we have any questions, so I'll let you sit down, and you will have the opportunity to make some concluding comments at the end of the public comments.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Our first speaker is Marty Weening, followed by Linda Spencer.
Marty's name is...
Okay. Linda Spencer. Following Ms. Spencer will be Nancy Healy.
Good evening, how are you? My name's Linda Spencer, I'm the president of the Property Owners Association for Westlake Hills. This is the area immediately adjacent to the area in question, the neighborhood there. I just wanted to offer my support, as well as the support of our board members and many of the residents who've come out, excuse me, to the meetings that we've had. I can't tell, I couldn't even tell you anybody that I can recollect that would have been against this, though we've heard that there had been some people against the roundabout. Griffin has been extremely good partners to us. They've come out every single time, they've come out with any kind of a suggestion that's made by one of the residents that they would like to have corrected. They've corrected it for us, they listened to everything that, any concern any residents had, and they've really done a good job of just absolutely catering to the needs of the neighborhood. I think that's really important. They, let me see, any of the other stuff, you know, the attention to detail with regard to the aesthetics of the property, of anything that I can think of that anybody ever brought up as a concern, they've addressed. Let's see. You know, we've heard many different proposals with regard to what to do with this land there over the years, and thus far, this has been by far the best proposal that we've heard. We like the fact that it's a low-traffic impact by doing that. And I just, I wanted to comment as well, since I have a little bit of time, I wanted to comment as well about the roundabout because I, obviously, since I've been in on all the meetings with Griffin, have heard the couple of people who, you know, had concerns with regard to the roundabout. Their concern mostly was that they didn't understand what a roundabout was, they'd maybe never experienced one, and they were a little confused. I live in that inlet right there, which is the road that would go in off of Duesenberg, excuse me, is Clearwater. And coming out of Clearwater, without anything there now to mitigate the traffic, what we have, when parents drop their students off in the morning, or when they pick them up in the afternoon, if you have to turn left onto Duesenberg, you can get stuck there for 15 minutes or more, waiting to go left there. The other thing that a lot of people don't see, who don't live off of that area there, are the car accidents from the excessive speed that's going around. I came in to turn into my neighborhood one day, and there was a boy who just smashed into the curb there because he was taking the corner so fast, he couldn't control his car, and he crashed. We've seen cars T-bone there, you know, where it spun them around, they've had to be taken away in ambulances, so there's a speed problem there, too, that I would love to see addressed with the roundabout. I think it's an easy fix to do, to do that. And, you know, as far as the rest of it goes, I really would encourage you guys to just approve this because we're all in favor of it, whether, you know, you hear anybody at all who potentially may say something negative about it. What I've heard from the residents that I've spoken to, as well as my fellow board members, is that we are highly, highly in favor of this. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer. Nancy Healy, followed by Tony Git. And our last speaker will be Mark Lyon.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, and city staff. My name is Nancy Healy, and as June of this year, I will be a 30-year resident of the Caneo Oak section of Thousand Oaks. I love living here. I am here tonight in support of the proposed assisted living memory care facility on Duesenberg Drive. But I want to be honest to start, I'm never going to move to that place. You know what, I'm never going to move to one of the Atrias, or one of the Sunrises, or the Reserve, or University Village. And you know why that is? Because nothing bad is ever going to happen to me. I'm never going to have a stroke that I didn't anticipate. I'm never going to have a fall like tonight when I leave this building, which will require more care for me than I have. I'm never going to be diagnosed with a debilitating illness like Parkinson's, which would change the status of my life. Okay, I'm just going to keep going, and I can live in my lovely home forever. Okay. I've been a long-term care ombudsman for the 10 years since I've been retired. Every single resident I have talked to said, I never planned to be here, but they ended up having to be there. Some of our needs for more assist, for assisted care, for memory units, they happen very unexpectedly. We don't all know we're going to have a stroke next week, or that we're going to fall, or we're going to be in an accident. We hope and pray that we won't, but that doesn't mean it's not going to happen to you. So these needs come up quickly, and when they do, we all, almost every one of us, wants to find a place right here where we can live, where we have friends. At this current time, I have a close friend named Linda, who lives in Kevington in a home she and her husband built 40 years ago. She would love to have lived there forever, and that's what she planned. But unfortunately, she had a stroke last January that prevents her from living by herself in that home anymore. She is currently looking for a place to live in Thousand Oaks. She has finally recognized, I can't do this by myself anymore. So now she is looking. Her biggest thing that she wants, she wants it to be pretty and all that stuff, she wants it in Thousand Oaks. She worked locally, she volunteered locally for one of our nonprofits, she has a million friends here. She happens to have no children, no family, so her friends here are her family. She does not want to leave them. There are lots of people like that. We don't always plan for the things that happen to us. To sum it up, I'm just here to support this facility. I hope that you guys will consider this for my friend and for all the other senior residents of Thousand Oaks who may one day be faced with the sometimes quick need for an assisted living facility or a memory care facility. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. Tony Git, and our last speaker will be Mark Lyon.
My agenda, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Fox, members of the council, my name is Tony Git, I live on Sawtooth Court in the Westlake Hills portion of Thousand Oaks. My home backs up to Duesenberg, facing almost directly to the center of the proposed assisted living facility, and I am in favor of the project and the associated roundabout. I would ask one condition be applied during the construction phase, and that is that the beepers on the trucks be muted or down, eliminated altogether so that the residents don't have to put up with all that during the day. But other than that, I'm really in favor of this project. Most important reason is that the changing demographics in Thousand Oaks are shifting towards a significant increase in the senior population. This is not just a local phenomenon, but is occurring nationally, as stated in the White House report on aging. 10,000 baby boomers per year are turning, per day, are turning 65. Your own community opinion survey pointed out that the senior demographic is the fastest-growing population sector in the area. Of course, not all boomers will initially need assisted living and memory care, but as the years go on, many boomers will eventually want this type of facility. The proposed facility will be a pleasant experience for seniors to live out their final years. It will mean that some seniors will not have to leave their friends and family because of a shortage of such facilities in the Caneo Valley. And as seniors downsize, it will make more houses available for people who want to move into the Caneo Valley. The developer, Griffin Fine Living, has worked with our Property Owners Association to consider our needs and concern, and has come up with a pleasing village design, like the stepped approach used at the Target Center in Westlake Village. The underground parking off Los Feliz, although an added development expense, will minimize impact on the surrounding area. This will be an improvement and an asset to the long-baked Duesenberg lot. Other previous proposals for this lot have included an automobile storage facility, a rental storage facility, and a business strip mall. The lot has also been used to sell Christmas trees in the past. This project is a wonderful improvement over those previous proposals. Seeking its own change from industrial to institutional will help smooth the transition from Westlake Hills family neighborhood to the industrial area on Los Feliz. The proposed roundabout will reduce current speeds on what some of us now call Duesenberg Speedway, especially during rush hours when many drivers choose Duesenberg to shortcut the congestion at Westlake and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The roundabout will make it safer for both autos and pedestrians along Duesenberg, especially with the bumpouts for the crosswalks, which will be added to the current intersection. It will introduce a traffic calming effect to an area that merges homes and businesses, and the developer will fund it. It's really a win-win for everybody. Finally, this is really the right project in the right area in Thousand Oaks. It will help fill a growing need in the community. So I ask you to ask yourselves, if not here, where? If not now, when? Please approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mark Lyon will be our last speaker. Mark's going to pass, okay? That concludes the public comment portion for this public hearing. We can go back to you, Mr. Neese, if you have any concluding comments. Everybody seems to be in favor, so you can only go downhill from here.
No comments, Mayor, except that we agreed at the planning commission with Mr. Git's request that we will use the lowest beeper volume that the health and safety will allow us, and they have recently changed the volume to allow it to go lower. So we will comply with state law, but use the lowest volume that we can. And other than that, we're here for any other questions.
Any questions? Any questions? All right, hearing, thank you, sir. Let me just congratulate you on behalf of the council. I did meet you several years ago, I guess it was three, and encouraged you to meet with the residents and the neighbors. And that could have been a difficult project to, a piece of property to develop. And this is a classic case study of how to do it right. And so I want to congratulate you, I want to congratulate the neighborhood for your good-faith discussions with this applicant. It is possible to do that in this community, and there's no question, one of the speakers talked about past proposals, there's no question, this is a superior project, and it is well-suited, and it's certainly needed in our community. So on behalf of all of us, I want to congratulate you for your community outreach. That's how you do it. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and the table is open for discussion or motion. Mr. Price.
Thank you. You've said it all, Mr. Mayor. I can remember a couple of years ago when you came here for your request for concurrent processing, and there were a couple of items that needed, still needed to be dealt with, and you seemed to have managed those quite well. I can't tell you that, I don't think I've ever seen a proposal with, without at least one person standing here in opposition to it. And so congratulations, and with that, I'd be happy to move staff's recommendations, and, forgotten what they are, but... One through four, yes.
All right, Mr. Price moves the staff recommendation, one through four, for approval. Discussion on his motion. Mr. Adam.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Price. Mayor Fox, I just wanted to echo the sentiments of the council, thank you very much for the community outreach, we really value that. Makes our job a little bit easier. You've addressed all the concerns of the neighbors, and as Mr. Git mentioned, this was, this piece of property was proposed for a public storage unit eight or nine years ago, and this is a much better, higher and better use for the property. And thank you for saving oak tree number five, appreciate that. That was, that's the biggest tree on the property, I believe, and I was on the planning commission during that time with the public storage approval, and I fought to save that tree, and it's going to be saved. So I appreciate you building around that. And as Ms. Healy said, you know, we all want to age in place if we can, but sometimes we can't. And that's why we have nine assisted living facilities in Thousand Oaks, and this will make our 10th with 1,300 beds. We value our seniors, this council will continue to support our seniors in any way we can because it is a growing population, and we're here for our seniors, and I think this is going to be a great location and a great project.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. Ms. Bill De La Pena.
I too would like to congratulate you on a wonderful effort, though it took a few years, but you can see what happens when you involve the community early on. And that is what we really encourage every applicant with major projects to do, is to reach out to the neighbors first. Congratulations on a job extremely well-done, and also congratulations on a roundabout. I personally love roundabouts, I think they're fantastic, and I would like to see more of them in Thousand Oaks, so we'll see. All right, thanks.
Mr. McCoy.
Mr. Neese, I just want to commend you on your civility and kindness, the way you operated through this with such patience, for what, three years plus? It just is remarkable for our community. And Griffin Fine Living, when they build this building, there'll be 89 citizens that will be treated with that same kindness and civility that'll bless our city. And I just want to say thank you, thank you for being patient. And you have a lot to be happy about, and you deserve it, so God bless you.
All right, if there's no further discussion on Mr. Price's motion, prepare the roll, please. Spread the vote.
The motion carries 5-0, and your ordinance title is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Thousand Oaks, amending the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code relating to official zoning and changing zoning classification of property located at 95 Duesenberg Drive, Z 2017-70148, and the applicant is Griffin Fine Living LLC.
All right, and that is approved. We'll move to item 8B. That's our second public hearing tonight. Madam Corr, could you call item 8B for public hearing, please?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider, agenda item 8B regarding proposed parking... Agenda item 8B regarding proposed parking lot, mitigated negative declaration, MND 2017-70300, zone change, Z 2017-70299, oak tree permit, OTP 2017-70297, landmark tree permit, LTP 2017-70298, special use permit, minor modification, SUMN 2017-70296, located at 3525 North Moor Park Road, and the applicant is WSL Castle Hill LLC. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing. All documents for the City Council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Three individuals have presented speaker cards, and pursuant to council standards, each speaker will have five minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Peter, are you gonna handle the staff report again?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will do this presentation as well. This is a request to build a 34-space employee parking lot on a undeveloped 1.6-acre site that's adjacent to the reserve. In the staff report, it's called, it's still called Castle Hill because the original application came under that LLC name, and they have since changed that name. This item is before council only because the project requires a zone change in order to make the zoning match what the rest of the assisted living facility has. Otherwise, this action would have been a final action at planning commission. The project sites at the corner of Moor Park and Olson, immediately adjacent to the reserve. The zone change would take the site from the RE zoning district into the PL zoning district. Once again, as stated with the last item, the PL zoning district is the appropriate zoning for an assisted living facility. The project would place the parking lot on the northern part of the site. The lot would be accessed through the existing driveway for the reserve. There will be no additional curb cuts or driveways onto Moor Park or Olson. The project will result in the removal of one protected tree. The site has a total of 23 protected trees, but the one protected tree in this case is only a two-inch diameter. It's a holly oak that happens to have grown from an acorn of a larger holly oak on the adjacent property. But as part of this project, the applicant will be planting 28 new trees in total, including five oak trees. The project required mitigated negative declaration primarily to address biology issues because of an existing drainage swale on the site. Staff has reviewed the project in compliance with CEQA, and a mitigated negative declaration is prepared for you to adopt. The planning commission reviewed this item also on the meeting of the 5th, 5th of February, and unanimously recommended approval of the project. So staff recommendation and the planning recommendation is to adopt the CEQA document, introduce the zone change, and approve the special use permit, minor modification, the oak and landmark tree permits, all based on the findings and conditions in the attached resolutions and ordinance. And that concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Questions for staff on this item? Ms. Bill De La Pena.
Thank you. I just have a quick question about that little holly oak. If it's two inches in diameter, then technically we don't need to give approval to have it removed, but it's included in the report anyway, for transparency reasons, I imagine?
Yes, it just meets the threshold. The two inches is the threshold. But they're offering replacement trees on top of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? The applicant's here for questions. Does the council have any questions for the applicant on anything? All right, hearing done, we're gonna, unless the applicant has something to say? No? Okay, very good. We're gonna close the public hearing and entertain a motion on this item. Oh. I don't think we have, all the speakers for this item are consultants for this, correct? Yeah. Good thought. All right, Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move 8B, parking lot for 34 employees at the reserve.
All right, Mr. Adam moves 8B. Discussion, Ms. Bill De La Pena.
No, I was going to make the motion, but that's okay.
Right, you guys are all over it. Any further discussion on Mr. Adam's motion? All right, hearing done, prepare the vote.
The motion carries 5-0, and your ordinance title is an ordinance amending municipal code relating to official zoning and changing zoning classification of property located at 3525 North Moor Park Road, Z 2017-70299. The applicant is WSL Castle Hill Retirement LLC.
All right, and that is approved. Council's gonna stand in recess for five minutes while staff gets prepared for the downtown core master plan, that's our next item. So we'll be in recess for five minutes.
All right, we will reconvene our city council meeting for Tuesday, March 6th. And we will go to item 9A, that's the departmental report for downtown core master plan. Mr. Town, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, very pleased to present this item. This is an update on the downtown core master plan. And we're here tonight to ask you to consider two actions. One is to simply receive this update on the preparation of the downtown master plan. But secondly, to authorize staff in coordination with our partner consultant on this project to conduct public outreach on the concepts that we will be talking about momentarily. In terms of the master plan background, I think it's worth spending a minute to just talk briefly about sort of how we got here. As you recall, in the downtown core, and again, the downtown core is from Erbs Road on the west to Canejo School Road on the east, it's about a half mile long stretch. That is the core, as we'll be referring to it tonight. You, the community, has seen several proposals in the last few years, several mixed-use proposals in this downtown core. And I think what that made everybody realize is that there wasn't really a common vision for this central downtown area as we, as staff, as you, as council, even as the planning commission looked at the projects, at least the Lupe's project. There wasn't a common thread woven between them. Another factor that we talked about over about the last year is that this downtown core is comprised of two specific plans, the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, but then also the Civic Arts Plaza specific plan, which is where we're seated tonight. And as you know, the city owns the land within the Civic Arts Plaza specific plan, which gives us a great deal of control, of leverage, over what actually occurs within the majority of the subject area, which is a great opportunity. Third, as we have all been contemplating, the issuance of a request for proposals for the West Side properties, those are the properties on the west side of the entrance road, Dallas Drive, to the Civic Arts Plaza. There is also a realization that we really need to nail down what the goals are for this central district so that we can appropriately write that RFP. And then finally, and this is a thought that really is stuck in my mind, and that is, we really only have one opportunity to get this right, to really get it right in the downtown core. The decisions that we are making, that you are making, are long-term, and they won't come back. So it's vital that we are on target in terms of our goals, and those can be summarized here as we've written, to really create a special environment that's attractive, vibrant, and pedestrian-friendly. With that background, city council formed the ad hoc downtown revitalization committee, composed of Mayor Fox and council member Adam, actually last February, about a year ago. And that was a key first step to creating the master plan, to reviewing ideas related to it. And that led to a really important second step, which took place last August, and that was when you authorized the hiring of Ramey and Associates to actually prepare the downtown core master plan in coordination with the ad hoc committee and with staff. And in that context, I think it's worth mentioning that when we say Ramey and Associates, we're really talking about a diverse design team. We, I'll introduce him momentarily, but Matt Ramey, the principal consultant to my left, is the lead, but there are a variety of disciplines represented on the team. There is land use planning, urban design, architecture, landscape architecture, urban land use, economics, and community outreach. So although you'll be hearing from Matt in a moment, he actually represents a broad team of experts that bring what I think is a comprehensive holistic approach to this downtown area, which is appropriate. We need to look at it from multiple perspectives and from multiple disciplines. So as Mr. Ramey and his team was hired, again, the purpose, and I mentioned it at the bottom of this image, this slide, is to create a strategic approach to the downtown area that can truly guide future actions. Mr. Ramey has been tasked with creating a strategy that is practical, implementable, and will help the city to realize its long-term goals. So with that, I'm going to turn over both the presentation and my seat to Mr. Ramey, and then I'll wrap up at the end, so thank you.
Mr. Ramey, good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for inviting me here today. I'm Matt Ramey with Ramey and Associates, and I'm really actually excited to be here at this time because it's been about six months of work, working with the downtown committee, working with the great staff, and our consultant team to get to this point. And so we're excited to present where we are and get some feedback on it. As we just heard, we were leading a consultant team, a diverse group of experts, that included John Kaliski Architects for Urban Design, Metropolitan Research and Economics for Market and Economic Research, and then Nelson Nygaard for Transportation. And my team was also stellar in this, and here tonight is Simran Malhotra, who's the project manager. And we also have on our staff Melissa Johnson Stark, who is one of our younger staff members who grew up right here in Thousand Oaks and provided really invaluable insight into this area. So what I'm going to do tonight is to give you some background on where we are and how we got here, and then focus in on four of the critical actions that we think are necessary in order to make a downtown core for the area. Now, I'm going to, let me start with the conclusion. I'm going to start with the end and then tell you how we got there. And the conclusion is that, in my opinion, and the opinion of our team, the city has a really amazing opportunity here. You have an opportunity to create something truly special. There are lots of assets that you have right here in this area that you can build on, and that most of the actions needed to really get the ball moving forward are in the city's hands. And having done this work all across the state, across the country, it's pretty rare to have that situation where you're trying to actually create something different, and you have the pieces in place to be able to start that. So that's the conclusion. Now let me tell you how we got there. I'm going to start with some background information. So first, the image that you see here in the red outline is our study area, it's the downtown master plan boundary. The area is just over 50 acres in size. There is its sloping kind of towards Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which runs right through the middle. The area is bounded by 101, Erbs Road, Canejo School Road, and then the parcels on the north side of Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And I do want to point out here that what we call the West Side parcel, which is the parcel owned by the city, just west of Dallas Drive, about three acres in size, and you can see that here just on the west side of Dallas Drive, and that's going to be an important parcel later on, and we're going to talk about that. Skip the slide. I'm going to, actually, I'm going to go back here, one of my slides is missing. So the downtown core has a diverse amount of uses right now, including public entertainment, parking, open space, housing, and retail. One of the things that impressed me, I'm going to go back here, one of the things that impressed me the most is that the city hall and Civic Arts Plaza, where we are right now, is really an incredible asset, as well as the investment that you've put into the parking structure. So these are all great things that you can build off of for the downtown. You have the lakes, the retail there, you have mastros, you have gardens of the world. They're really tremendous assets here. But while there are a lot of strengths, there also are some challenges that lead this area to not be at its full potential right now. So some of those challenges are, you have anchor uses, but they're really not connected to one another. They are sort of disparate uses, and there's no tie between them. Thousand Oaks Boulevard is a barrier, a lack of pedestrian activity along the Boulevard. It's really, it's not walkable, the traffic moves quickly through there. The Civic Arts Plaza is designed, you know, where we are now is really designed as somewhat isolated and insular building, especially the theater. People come into the theater, they see the show, and then mostly they leave through the parking garage, and there really is no connection. And so the question that we really have moving forward is, what makes a downtown? What is a downtown that we could create here in Thousand Oaks? And what we really want to do is, we want to create a destination, a destination for residents of the city, for residents of this area, for employees, and for visitors. While there are no two downtowns that are alike, there are lots of characteristics that are in common. Downtowns are really places to be. They are places people want to go to, they are places people want to interact with each other, they don't want to be isolated, they want to have activity, they want to have interactions. People want to go there to have dinner with family and friends, they want to go out for a drink, they want to see a live show. For the Thousand Oaks downtown, what we want to do is, we want to create an environment where more people are coming to the area, people spend more time, more time means they spend more money, more money means there are more businesses, and it creates a cycle of activity, and this is the activity that you want to create here. And to do this, what we need is actually a diversity of activities, a diversity of uses. You can see the figure here on the right, you have employees, residents, and visitors, and then you have these different uses that can attract people to the downtown, events and culture, and you actually have quite a bit of that already here right now. We'll get to it, not enough, but you have a great starting point. Cafes and bars, full-service food and beverage, that's what F&amp;B is, and then retail. So these are some of the uses that you want here. You also want the downtown to be walkable, you want it to be easy to get to, you want it to have a unique identity, you want to know when you've arrived in a downtown space. You want activities that draw people in, and where people can spend time, and then you want public spaces. During the process, over the last six months, we researched, we worked with the team, and we researched and visited downtowns around the area, we identified different characteristics that were common, we spoke with a number of property owners, interest groups, some residents, and we worked closely with staff and the downtown committee. And based on this, we came up with a brief list of outcomes that you see here on the screen. Let me highlight just a few of them. One, something that we heard from a lot of the stakeholders, is that the area should be unique. It should be different from other locations along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, it should be different from other locations in the region, and it should be uniquely Thousand Oaks. The second is that the area should be designed for people of all ages, for kids, teens, college students, young professionals, families with children, empty nesters. It shouldn't be targeted towards one group, it should be targeted towards all groups of people who want to be here. Again, that's really common with downtowns. The third is that the area should be walkable, it has to be pedestrian-friendly. I have not yet seen a downtown that is not pedestrian-friendly. And finally, there should be sufficient and convenient parking in the area. Through all of this, we identified that there are actually four critical actions that have to happen in order to move this project forward and to really begin this idea of creating a downtown. The first is to redesign the Civic Arts Plaza frontage to be more active. The second is to create a retail and entertainment destination for the city-owned West Side parcel. The third is to improve the pedestrian environment along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And the fourth is to expand arts, cultural, and entertainment programming, so a non-physical critical action. And I'm going to talk about all of these in just a couple minutes. Supporting all of this are lots of other activities that can happen in order to really make the downtown vibrant. The four mentioned here are probably four of the most important. So the first is to add a greater diversity of cultural activities and spaces. The second is to create additional district parking, a park-once philosophy, again, common in downtowns, to support retail and events. That way, you don't have to move your car every time you go to a different use, you park once and you walk around to different stores, restaurants, shops. The third is to attract complementary uses and development along the Boulevard, such as mixed-use and residential. And the fourth is to build supporting uses on the lakes parking lot. Okay, I'm going to walk through each of the critical actions. Our process started with an overall design framework. We looked at the site, we came up with different alternatives, physical design alternatives, and then we sort of honed in on a design direction for the area. And let me highlight a few of the elements that we came up with here. The first is that we should make Thousand Oaks Boulevard a focal point of activity. You can see the sort of the green in the slide here along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Right now, a lot of the buildings are sort of set back from the street, but what we would expect in the future is that the buildings, the new buildings that come in, similar to Lupe's, are fronting the street, and there's an active frontage. Again, it's a place that tends to draw people in. The second is that we capitalize on the underground drainage canal, and that's shown here in blue as a dotted line. There is a drainage canal that runs through this area, and it's something that we really have to, instead of trying to figure out a design solution around it to pave over it, what we thought is, let's capitalize on it, and let's use it as sort of a backbone of the area. And so the idea is that it would become a paseo that moves through the area from east to west. And in some places, it would be fronted with buildings, in other places, it would just kind of be a pathway through the area, but it would be a connecting feature that ties together the uses both that are here now and would come in the future. Again, one of the things that is missing here now is that connectivity, the physical and the visual connectivity. The third is to create a town square. You can see that here in the orange, which is, again, very common among downtowns, is a central meeting place that is public and that is outside, a place that people want to go and be and connect. The fourth is to mark the arrival into the downtown with entryways and gateways. And then the fifth is to make Thousand Oaks Boulevard safer and more comfortable for pedestrians. So moving into the four critical features, the four critical actions that we have, the first has to do with this building, with Civic Arts Plaza. Right now, the theater, city hall, and the parking garage are really tremendous assets. These are things that you want in a downtown area. They bring vibrancy during the day, they bring vibrancy at night. There's, again, a lot of money in a parking garage, and these are all things that, when we're working in other communities to create downtowns, they wish they had these. So you have them here, and they're things to build upon. Unfortunately, the design of the building is physically and visually detached from the adjacent uses and from Thousand Oaks Boulevard. I don't mean to disparage this building, but what we really think, and, you know, there's a lot of great assets to the building, but what we really think needs to happen is that there needs to be some more, the building needs to be reconfigured and activated in order to create that connection. So imagine when you're up in the, you go to a show up here, and you look out, and you see the tops, you see the hills, it's a beautiful view, but what you don't see is the lakes, where you could actually go get dinner. What you don't see is a plaza where you can go and hang out. What you don't see is Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and you can't get there, really, by walking, not comfortably. And so that's the concept, that's the idea. So the building could be designed for transparency and for access, and city hall could have a front door facing Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The second is that Thousand Oaks, the plaza out here could be redesigned, portion of that could be redesigned as a town square that becomes a meeting and gathering place, and a place for community events. The downtown core really can be this place for community events, for people to come together, events that are both large and small. And so the area, the plaza could be redesigned in order to make sure that that happens and to help provide that connectivity between the Boulevard and between the theater. The next is to create flexible and varied performance spaces. Right now, you have a wonderful big theater, and you have this room, but there's not that variety of spaces, so you either have really big events, or you actually don't have many events at all. And what we want is, we want to make sure that there's more and more events and activities happening here, and to do that, you need other types of spaces, and the spaces need to be flexible to be used for different types of events. We want things like water features, and you can see that here in the image on the screen. We want places for people to feel comfortable, to hang out, to spend time, public art and other features that really need to be added. And then there are some absolutely beautiful trees here, and those trees really need to be maintained because they are part of the culture here in the city. The next critical item, item number two, has to do with the West Side parcel. And this is, again, another amazing asset that the city has, that right in the area where you want to create your downtown, right next to it, you have approximately a three-acre parcel that is underdeveloped, and you get to decide what you can do with it. Again, an incredible opportunity that you have here. And so the vision for this area, for this parcel, is to create a one- or two-story entertainment, retail, complex, purpose-built, that supports the cultural and arts activities in the area, but it also has restaurants, entertainment uses, cafes, brew pubs, wine rooms, tasting rooms, you know, things that people, places that people want to be. It would be organized around the paseo, which is the drainage canal, and it could also support other uses, like boutique hotel and district parking to support uses throughout. We know there's been some discussion about the boutique hotel, we think that it is absolutely a possibility in this area, and certainly something that could be explored and could support the activities that are happening here in this area anyway. You'll see on the screen, there's a couple of examples of paseos and boutique hotels that we looked at as part of this process. The third item has to do with Thousand Oaks Boulevard. As I mentioned earlier, one of the design themes that we came up with and that a lot of the stakeholders said was, don't turn your back on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, build to the Boulevard, make the Boulevard a better place to be, rather than a place that you don't want to be. So that's what the vision here is, to redesign this part of Thousand Oaks Boulevard to be more pedestrian-friendly and to be more supportive of a downtown area. And so that includes widening sidewalks and providing pedestrian amenities. Sidewalks should be a minimum of 15 feet in width, and that should be in the public right-of-way. It should maintain, we should maintain off-street parking. It's really important to have off-street parking because it provides a buffer between the travel lanes and the sidewalk. The street would maintain the four lanes of traffic flow. One of the interesting things that we found is that, you know, right now, Thousand Oaks Boulevard is not the most pedestrian-friendly place to be, it is not a great environment to walk along. And Nelson Nygaard, who is our consultant for this, basically said, well, the lane widths on Thousand Oaks Boulevard are wider than on the 101 freeway. And if you wonder why cars are going so fast, that is definitely one of the reasons. And the reason that we can come up with some of these ideas here is that we're proposing to narrow the lane widths here, and that automatically maintains flow, but slows the traffic down a little bit. There would be no, in this proposal, there would be no median, but there would be a center turn lane to allow cars to turn, and there would be a bicycle sharos, which is a shared lane, a shared right lane, that would tie to the citywide network. And as I mentioned before, there would also be gateway signage. The fourth item is events programming, events and programming. And this is, again, not a physical change, but actually an expansion of the events and the activities that are happening here now. Tremendous asset, having this, having what, all of the activity that happens now, but it could really be expanded, and it could be a great place, and the vision is to actually make this the place when there's an event in the region, it is the place. It's not working? Oh, speak closer? Okay. It's the place, we want this to be the place when people think of an event or an activity, they imagine it's downtown, it's in this area, and so we want to make sure that we're providing the space for it, and that the city is working towards making sure that that happens. So this would involve building on the existing events, expanding the range of events and activities that could happen, things like, you know, it's really a layering of events throughout the year, big and small, anything from a major art show, the finish line for the Amgen Tour of California, chili cook-off, farmer's market, so small activities. And the idea is that the Civic Arts Plaza could be designed to be a flexible space that could be used for activities, small and large. And for the largest activities, the portion of Thousand Oaks Boulevard could be closed, and the activity could flow out into the street, and there would be similar paving on the plaza flowing out into the street, so that it would just become a on the plaza flowing out into the street, so that it would just become a single type, a single space. To achieve this, again, a diversity of different types of spaces and facilities, and the city would need to partner with outside groups. Again, the city's already doing a lot in this area, and we need to continue the great work that it's doing, continue and expand that. I want to just take a minute here and give a couple of closing thoughts as we finish up here. So, the, I've been doing this work for a while, and it's sort of rare to find an opportunity like this, where you have all of these tremendous assets, and more importantly, where the activities that need to happen to get the ball rolling are in the city's hands. You don't have to rely on private investment to really push this forward. They are in your control. And again, that's sort of a really a rare thing, and so you really control these pieces that you need for success. The four main items are the items that we think are the ones out of the gate that you should do, they're all very achievable, they're all very doable, and they're things that can actually be started on in very short order. What we are hoping to do, moving forward, is to engage the public on the vision that we've created and presented here tonight, and then move forward and create the master plan document that we would then come back to you with. We're at a point where we have moved a certain distance, we've obtained some, we've kind of come up with some conclusions, but we want to make sure that it's, there's buy-in. We want to make sure that there's other ideas that we can add to this, because I'm sure there's great ideas from the community that can make the ideas we have here even better. And so what our plan is, is that prior to March 15th, which is in nine days, to update the website with additional information and to create an online survey to allow the community to provide comments on what we have, the information we have here. Then we are going to do a series of pop-up workshops, so we'll show up at different places in the city, have some materials outside, and then kind of intercept people as they're coming by, and have informal conversations. We found that this is a really good way to get the average person, who doesn't always show up at a planning commission or a city council meeting, who might want to spend five or 10 minutes hearing what's going on and provide some input. And those are scheduled for March 15th, March 17th, and April 21st. On April 26th, we have an open house scheduled, and that would present the information that we've heard throughout the pop-ups, plus additional information we've developed for the, after this, based on the feedback. April 30th is the planning commission meeting to present the draft plan, and then May 15th would be the city council meeting. It's an aggressive schedule. So now, I'm going to turn it back over to Mark, just stay on this one? Okay. Okay.
So I have one entire slide to wrap up with, and then this is it. So, first, I just wanted to thank Mr. Ramey and his entire team, I think they've done really outstanding work to get us to this point. It's been a very rigorous discussion to get to these principles. They may seem somewhat simple on the surface, but in fact, there's been a lot of debate and dialogue to really pair the concepts that we think are most vital, that Matt and his team thinks are most vital, down to these four key points, and as well as those supporting activities. So having said that, again, we are asking that the council receive this update, provide comments as appropriate, and authorize staff to work with Mr. Ramey's team on the outreach schedule as was just outlined. And with that, we are happy to answer any questions, Mr. Ramey, myself, or Peter Gilli to my left, Deputy Community Development Director. Thank you.
Okay, nice presentation, gentlemen. Let me go to Mr. Adam first, who's joined me on the committee. Let me just say this, because Al, I think you may want to make some comments relative to our process, but I want to share with the council that, just to note, the date that the committee started, February 2017. We have been at this well over a year, actually, longer before that. And what the council is seeing is a very, very, very distilled, concise report that has staff has pointed out, is the result of many, many meetings, many, many discussions, simply because, as has been mentioned before, we absolutely have a duty to get this right. This is a grand vision for Thousand Oaks Boulevard. I would expect, many would say that this is actually bigger and has greater impact than the very building we're sitting in, because it has so many moving parts. So with that, as we ask our questions, unless there's an objection from the council, I'd like to take this in pieces, and that is, the items, the recommendations that council sees, one through four, if we could just work our way down, items one through four, if you have questions, for example, on the redesign, that way staff's not jumping around with the graphics. Once we get those questions answered, then we can move to the retail, and then the pedestrian along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and then finally, the cultural programming. If you don't have any questions in those areas, then we'll just move on to the next. Does that seem like a good way to work our way through that? Okay, Mr. Adam.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, just a couple of general comments. I mean, as far as the timeline of this thing, if you remember, the specific plan for the Boulevard was okayed in 2011, and we really didn't make much progress on it until it finally dawned on the council and the ad hoc committee that it was too daunting of a task to try to redevelop three and a half miles of a Boulevard. So let's narrow it down to our downtown core, from Herbs to Canaho School Road, and that's exactly what we've done. And then, we realized, too, that we're trying to create a downtown, and a lot of what we were trying to create wasn't afforded for in the specific plan. So that's why it came to us, that we needed to put together a master plan for the 50% of the property that we own in this downtown core. And we have narrowed it down to these four items, these four very actionable items, and I think that they're very important. I mean, when you talk about making the Boulevard pedestrian-friendly, to be able to have the power, the city, that is, to put in 15-foot sidewalks on both sides of the street and have it uniform, is huge. It's huge, it's a huge thing. You don't have to necessarily depend on the property owners and have a non-contiguous sidewalk stretch. I mean, that could be an outdoor dining, that could be more pedestrian-friendly, that is a big portion of this. And to program the Civic Arts Plaza grounds, and to open up those grounds, to make them less fallow and more active, is very important. And to take a look at that Civic Arts Plaza building itself, you know, it's been up here now for 22, 23 years, but it needs to evolve. You know, I'd like to see people come out of the Cavali Theater and be able to walk down to the Boulevard, and walk onto that paseo, and maybe stroll all the way down to the Lupe's side and beyond, and have benches, and lighting, and bars, and cafes, and that's why that paseo is very, a very, very important part of this whole project. And so is the West Side property for that. So what we're looking at here, really, is, this is not a housing proposal or anything like that, this is really a civic improvement proposal with a lot of public benefit. And that's what I'm excited about, because these are actionable items, and we can get these things done as a city, to set the stage for the redevelopment of our downtown, and to make it something that we're all proud of. And I really like the idea of a multi-generational approach. I want to see young people down there, seniors, you know, families, friends, and it'd be a real destination, and I think it would be music to all our ears to hear the hue and cry around the city, "Hey, what's happening in the downtown this weekend?" Or, "Let's go downtown." And that's what we're aiming for here, so. I didn't really have any questions, but having sat on this committee for a year, I thought I tried to illustrate how we got to where we are. And as I said, these are actionable items that we can work on right now.
Everybody's very familiar with how much you enjoy working on committees, Mr. Adam. It's like your second favorite thing. Ms. Bill Lopina.
And you too, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to you, as well as Councilmember Al Adam, for working on this committee for over a year. And I'm very pleased with the outcome of this exercise, because it confirms what we have been talking about for many, many years. And it is really assuring to see that it can be done. I do have questions regarding the arts and mixed use, well, mixed use, our supporting, I guess, supporting activities. There is a mention of supporting activities on the lakes parking lot, and I wanted to ask the consultant what that would mean. Does that mean the mixed use? Does it mean housing? Does it mean other, another theater? I don't know, what does that mean?
Thank you. There are different options that the property could be used for. A couple of concepts that came up during this process was potentially a hotel at the property. The other idea is, again, mixed use, residential over commercial. Those are the two main ideas that have come up. We haven't identified a final use. I think that, in the end, it would be advantageous to identify several appropriate uses for the property, but those are the two primary ideas that have come forward.
Okay.
And Matt just mentioned, another thought has been some kind of...
Of what? I'm sorry, say that again?
Some other, another idea is a flexible office space use, potentially.
Okay. And the term multi-generational use was mentioned tonight. How can that be accomplished? Is it, right now, I think we're accomplishing that through programming. There are certain shows that appeal to an older audience, certain shows that appeal to a younger audience. What else could, could that be, could we do to attract different generations? Is it, I'm mentioning, is it an art gallery? Is it something else?
The idea is that it's a place, to create a place that everyone wants to be, and it can happen both through programming, as you mentioned, but also through restaurants, through different types of bars that might be there, brew pubs tend to be very multi-generational at this point, wine tasting rooms, you know, any kind of restaurants, any kind of place that can really attract people. And I think the other piece of it is that the space can be flexible, and the use can be flexible, so that during the day, it could actually be more attractive to a parent who's staying home with their kid. And they might be there, and there might be an outdoor space that the kid can play in while the parent is having lunch. And then, in the early evening, it could be a happy hour, and then it could generate, it could, that same place could actually have, be a restaurant that could serve dinner, and then at a certain point, it could actually be, you know, after-hours drinks after a show. So, you know, even just a use, that is a good use in there, a private establishment can actually serve multiple generations for how, depending on how it's programmed.
I'm going to put you on the spot, because we do have a museum next to us, which is the California Museum of Art, and obviously, they're interested in expanding, having an art museum, is that something, obviously, that could be multi-generational as well, right?
I can't answer that one.
Well, I think many art museums have shown that they can be multi-generational in terms of the type of shows that they present. Many are designed for adults, but also, they can be designed for a younger audience. And so, you know, having some kind of an art space in this downtown area is, you know, is obviously reasonable to consider, and I think it comes back to the type of shows that would be presented. But all of the major museums that I'm familiar with have a variety of shows specifically targeting different age groups.
And just to, if I can add something to that, that there are also art museums that have outdoor spaces, and those outdoor spaces can be, can have sculpture and different types of art in them, and interactive art, which can actually be very good for kids. And so, you know, the Civic Arts Plaza could certainly incorporate art into the plaza, and into the, you know, into the, into the space that it has there in different spaces.
I think it would be wonderful, that would be unique, have something different in our downtown area, and that would be it. Now regarding the community outreach, you have some pop-up dates, and I was wondering, pop-up means you're just popping up without being announced, but are we nonetheless announcing or letting the public know that you have an opportunity to go to the mobile city, what do you call it, that RV that we have, the mobile unit?
Yeah, we by no means want to surprise people when we pop up. We don't want to scare anybody. But we do want people to know that we're going to be there, and so that's one of the reasons we're announcing it this evening. And then I think, maybe I'll let staff, it'll be on the project website, and there's probably other ways that we can announce it, to make sure people know that we're going to be there, so if they are interested, they can come by and see, and give us feedback.
And will that be done with our mobile unit?
I'll jump in on that really quick, just because I know the communications team, when I see our Assistant City Manager, Rachel Wagner, is up in the audience. Our team is going to be partnering, our communications team is going to be partnering with Ramey and Associates, the Community Development Department, to ensure that we cast the widest net possible for our outreach efforts. So we're going to be publishing our areas where we're going to be, and the dates where we're going to be, through all of our various channels, as we would for any outreach activities.
Thank you.
Mr. Price?
I don't really have any questions. I was going to offer up that we have one of those multi-generational spaces that you're speaking of in a neighboring city, that I know I've seen a number of our council members at. I'm going to leave it nameless, but it's just across on the, I'm sorry?
Yes.
That place. Stone House, that sort of concept, where you go there, and there are people of every age that are there, and I think that opens up the area to invitation for everybody, so, yeah. And brew pubs, did I mention them?
All right. Any further questions from council to staff? Okay, I'd say you guys did a pretty good job on that. We have one speaker card, Sean Meridian. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sean Meridian, president of Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association. Keep it short this evening, just want to thank staff and our consultant, Mr. Ramey, for this update. And our association has looked at the four proposals before us in concept, we do agree that they're a good idea to move forward, but we caution everyone that the devil, I'm sorry, the devils are in the details, and the implementation of these four steps are going to be really critical. So as this process moves forward, we look forward to working with staff and the consultant to make sure that we implement it, so we get the desired result. With that said, I'm available for any questions. If not, I thank all of you for this update.
Thank you, sir. All right, this is a departmental report, so we don't have to close a public hearing. And the recommended action is to adopt the recommended items one through four, and receive and file the report. It's a pleasure of the council. We are going to, Ms. Bill Lopina.
You wanted to go one by one, I think, right?
Oh, no, you could just, I thought you guys would, to be honest with you, I thought you'd have a lot more questions, but apparently, Mr. Adam and I have done a fantastic job.
From this end of the diocese, I was ready to move approval with recommendations one through four.
All right, outstanding. Ms. Bill Lopina moves items one through four, and to receive the report, discussion on her motion. And authorize the public outreach. Yeah, just some concluding comments, because it, again, we've been at this for over a year. We are very pleased that councils and community seems to be in alignment with these four principal ideas with respect that would recreate a downtown. And I think those of you at home that are reviewing would agree that we did our level best to come up with a concept that was consistent with our culture and our character here in Thousand Oaks, and at the same time, created that downtown feel that we're all striving for, that would result in a pedestrian-friendly and vibrant-type atmosphere in the downtown core. And we're very much looking forward to the public outreach, and then coming back in May with more details as it relates to the plan. So with that, prepare for the vote. So with that, prepare for the vote, please.
I just wanted to say that item number two is sufficient enough, when it says cultural and entertainment, that that casts a net wide enough to include arts or art galleries as well, art museum. Thanks.
Just on that note, there was substantial discussion with respect to art museum-type uses with Mr. Adams and myself. And as the staff points out, there is a place for that in this design concept. All right, vote, please.
The motion carries five zero.
All right, that is approved. Our second department report is item nine B. That's the pavement overlay for 2018. Mr. Finley, you going to handle the report?
All right.
Mr. Remy, while you're leaving, thank you, you and your staff. Fantastic job over the last several months, and we look forward to continuing our work.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I might, Kelvin, before you slip out there, I wanted to take an opportunity to introduce you to the city council we have with us this evening, our new deputy community development director, Mr. Kelvin Parker. And he's only on his second day on the job, and he's already had a planning commission meeting and a city council meeting. Really happy to have Kelvin join the team. Mark's really done a fantastic job building out quite the team in community development. Kelvin comes to us from the city of Pasadena most recently, where he was the planning manager there. Certainly a very complex place to work and happy to have you on the team here, Kelvin. And I know the council looks forward to working with you in the years ahead.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, nine B. Mr. Finley.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Our streets are the community's largest and most valuable asset with an estimated value of over $700 million. We know from the community attitude survey that the high-quality streets and roads are a top priority of our residents. We are before you this evening to recommend award of the construction contracts for our 2018 pavement program, which is the largest maintenance program in the city's history. Sitting up here with me this evening is Nadir Hadari, our Engineering Division Manager, who will deliver the report.
Thank you, Cliff, and good evening, councilmembers. We have over 380 miles of public streets in town and their current overall condition is very good. The pavement index PCI of 75. The average PCI in the county of Ventura is in the low 70s as a comparison, and in statewide, it's 65. Our goal is to preserve and improve the city street network in order to maintain them in this very good condition over the long term. In order to do that, we're proposing to use four different treatment solutions for this year's program, with each one used as appropriate across all different types of roadways. We've successfully used all four of these in the past on previous programs, including the last one in 2016. Three of them also use recycled rubber tires, which is in line with our long-term efforts to be environmentally sustainable. Here's a quick preview of the main treatments that we're proposing to be deployed in this year's program. We're again proposing to use re-ads slurry seal, which is a rubberized slurry seal. It's a thin resurfacing treatment that protects and seals pavement and extends the pavement life by five to seven years. Next, before you hear is the thin maintenance overlay, which is a thicker solution. It's an inch and a quarter thick, and it's used as an alternative to standard overlay where the conditions warrant. And this extends the pavement life 10 to 12 years. And then the last one, the full-blown, largest solution we're deploying this program is the full overlay. This is used primarily on arterial streets. This is two inches thick, correct surface defects, improves ride quality, and extends the pavement service life up to 20 years. Here's a citywide map of the final list of streets that are included in the 2018 pavement program. It features the rehabilitation and resurfacing of 51 total miles of streets, 28 miles of them being overlay and 23 being micro-surfacing and slurry seal. Some of the major roads to receive overlay this program will be Lynn Road, Thousand Oaks Boulevard, Vento Park Road, Herb's Road, Avenue de las Arboles, and Townsgate amongst others. As you can see, the program benefits all regions of the city as well as some city parking laws such as the Civic Arts Plaza and the Transportation Center. The combined effort of this large-scale investment will give us a four-point boost in our citywide PCI, bringing it up to 79. Here's a breakdown of the budget sources that are available to fund the combined project. The further details are in the staff report. Staff would like to thank the council for their commitment toward the paving program. With the special contribution of the one-time $11 million general fund investment, this is the largest investment in roads in the city's history. You'll notice there's also a $3 million contribution from the new SP1 gas tax listed on this slide as well. As you know, SP1 is the new statewide transportation fund that went into effect recently, and the city has already started to receive funding on this program, which will provide nearly $3 million for the current program and up to $4 million in the future, as will help reduce the structural gap in the road maintenance funding. Here's the combined cost for the entire 2018 pavement program incorporating the construction bids we received two weeks ago. We received, we obtained good bids and are therefore able to include a few additional areas in the program thanks to the SP1 funding and the economy of scale of the project. This is the combined summary of the roll-up costs versus total budget available for the project. And the good news is that with the additional funding and council's contribution, we're able to cover the entire project cost, including contingency, without having to deplete all of the available funding. This will leave a nearly $1 million to be rolled over into either the next program or to be used on other capital roadway and street improvement projects. Our project's been moving along on schedule since the beginning of the design phase in late 2016, and with your approval, we will proceed into the construction phase next month and be able to complete the project this fall. Given the scale of the project, over 50 miles, an extensive and robust outreach system, outreach program has been and will continue to be deployed, including branding, press releases, logo, continuously updated webpage, signs and message boards, and social media blasts. We'll also work to phase the project to do all of the areas adjacent to the schools during the lower volume months of the summer. Additional information and updates can be found on the city's dedicated new pavement program website, t-oaks.org/streets. This dedicated webpage has all the project information, including maps, list of streets, links to sign up for, email and social media updates. It is also short and easy to remember, t-oaks.org/streets. The recommendations are included in your staff report, and with that, staff will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you again for your commitment to this infrastructure program.
Any questions for Mr. Finley on this? We don't have any speaker cards. All right, let me just comment, 11, you guys hit the nail on the head, 11 million bucks. I've been on the council a long time. We never even come close to spending that amount of money on keeping our streets up to speed. I noted on the overlay map, is that the entire length of Lynn Road? Pretty close.
North of the 101 freeway.
Yeah.
It may, the transition to Olson is the end, yeah.
We had done Olson Road in a previous cycle, so this, I think, completes it in the last two cycles.
Yeah, I mean, it's a long ways, and there will be some, and you know, you'll be reporting back, there will be some inconvenience because this is roadwork, but when it's done, residents that live in our community are going to see some major, major improvements in an already great road system, but we're maintaining it, so. 51 miles. All right. Mr. Adams, you want to make a motion?
Yes, I would, and I just would like to say that this truly is an essential service of government. This is one of the big reasons we're here, and this is a top priority, the residents, and I'm very happy that we've embarked on this project. As you say, it's the biggest one we've ever done, and we're going to have some great streets. In fact, I do believe we have the best maintained streets in the county, and we're going to keep that up. So, yeah, I'd like to move nine B, the pavement overlay and slurry program.
Mr. Adams moves nine B. Discussion on his motion. Hearing none, prepare the vote.
The motion carries five zero.
And that is approved. Moved item 10, committee commission board reports. We have none. Item 12 is council issues and recommendations. 12A is the proposed council ad hoc homeless committee assignment. we had two volunteers for that, Mayor Protem McCoy and Councilmember Bill Lopena. And it would be my recommendation that those two council members be appointed to serve on the ad hoc city council homeless committee. Mr. Price is moving that item. There's no discussion? Prepare the vote.
The motion carries five zero.
You two got a lot of work cut out for you. I know you'll do a good job. Follow-up reports.
Mayor, if I could interrupt, we did have one public speaker. I'm not sure if the person's still in the audience. Lori Jacobs.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Ms. Jacobs. Didn't see that.
I can understand it. Look around.
Did you want us to take Mr. McCoy and Ms. Bill Lopena off the committee before you spoke?
I was, I'm here to speak to, I didn't understand, I'm sorry, I'm new here. My name is Lori Jacobs. Good evening, Mayor and city councilpeople and staff members. I am here to speak to the issue of homelessness in this community. I have lived in Thousand Oaks since 1994. I came to California as a young adult. A couple of weeks ago, I had the misfortune to be a party to a discussion on local social media, which really shocked me. Regarding the local homeless population, it was stated that I'm sure not one of them is from here, which we, obviously, now has been clearly refuted, that they are misfits, that we should not provide them with food or donate places that provide them with food, that they are lazy, do not want to work, and do not want shelter, but wish to be homeless because that's a pleasant way to live. We've, I've heard tonight that, okay, we should give some service to the people who are from here, and, but the others, we should not provide service to. I grew up in Long Island. I arrived here at age 33. If I were to become homeless, am I from here, or do I have to be shipped back to Long Island to get some food and services? I'm not quite sure. I've heard a lot of concern about homeless people being dangerous and also about the expenses. One thing I just recently read was there was a study in a region of Florida that determined it costs that community $31,000 per year, per homeless person, to provide services such as police responding to calls, arrests, transportation, mental and physical health issues, and hospitalization. In contrast, it was estimated to cost approximately $10,000 per year, per person, to provide that person with a place to live and a social worker to monitor their needs and how they're doing. That seems to be a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned. I am also wondering as far as the issue of whether, I didn't bring prepared remarks because obviously I haven't done this before, as far as the issue of needing to be here, do we, to be from here, do we then assume that there is nobody from Thousand Oaks who is homeless in another community, or do we have to go get them and bring them back? It's my belief that as far as, that we should not give them, we should not be giving them money, that we need to give money to services, provide money to services that can truly help them. It's my belief that they are best served and we are kept safest by having a permanent shelter, which provides them with social workers, access to drug rehabilitation, mental health care, or just job training and a little dignity and a place to give, have put an address on a job application so that they can move out of homelessness and into real life. I'd love to see a lot more going on. I'd love to see mental care facilities be available for people who are not able to reach that point. Unfortunately, that's not the case in this country at this point, and I hope that will change, but at this time, we can just need to do the best we can with the resources that we have to help the largest number of people we can. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we'll move to item 13.
I wanted to, I have one comment.
Sure.
Okay. I appreciate the comments by Ms. Jacobs, and I look forward to working with Mayor Protem McCoy on this challenge. It's going to be a challenge, no less. But whatever we do, I'm sure will involve feedback from the community because there is a, there are a variety of different perspectives. I was on social media this weekend trying to explain to people about homelessness when I see emails that say, throw the bums out, ban them all, you know, we don't want them here. Look at Beverly Hills, they don't have any homeless. Look at Calabasas, they don't have any homeless, but they do. They have homeless people. And Beverly Hills has certain programs available to the homeless. So this committee will not take the attitude of throw the bums out. I can assure you that, right? So this is going to be collaborative effort that will involve everybody, and we hope to get some very constructive feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bill Lopena. Item 13 is the city manager follow-up report. Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be on March 20, Tuesday evening. We currently have one public hearing, which is in relation to theater lighting system upgrade and a new user fee that will be associated with that. Several departmental reports, including an update that's a follow-up item from late last year on comprehensive general plan update process, what that process could look like, an annual general plan housing element report, and an update to our cannabis application and selection process. We're going to be making some potential modifications to that that we need to be bringing back to the city council that evening to our process midstream. We'll also hear a follow-up report from the annual National League of Cities Congressional Conference. That is it for my report.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Item 14, we have one closed session item. Ms. Noonan will announce that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one matter, conference with legal counsel on significant exposure litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. It is unlikely I'll have anything to report.
All right. And with that, we will adjourn to our regularly scheduled council meeting for March 20, 2018. And on behalf of the council, I want to wish everybody in our community a happy St. Patrick's Day, in which we are all Irish on that day. We are adjourned.